At this time, I'd ask everyone, please rise to the I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation
To the flag of liberty.
Very good, Bob. Thank you. Your present that would like to speak, is there anyone on that is on virtual that would like to speak for a public comment? Okay, then we will continue on. At this time, we'll go right to the approval of the minutes, October 4th, 2022. And I did catch in reading them that the mention of Amanda Gordon was written as Borden, and I'd like to have her name corrected with a D for Borden, wherever it appears, as the chairwoman and primarily the speaker that evening for the diversity commission. Is there anything else people caught on the October 4th regular minutes that you'd like to have amended?
Yeah, there's, I don't know if we have this recorded anywhere, but the time we exited the session probably.
Very good, yes. But is it the very end?
Yeah. And his name is in this minutes, the other minute.
Apologize.
I think there were some minor spelling errors. No big thing.
Yeah, the word, they're not numbered, and I think pages should always be numbered. Then the third page at the bottom, the word disposition, so it's disposition, it should be an I.
I have paged through a lot of that.
I'm on October 4th minutes, the ones I have don't have numbers. You read the third page, though.
Where is that?
Ongoing business towards the bottom, the very last paragraph. The disposition.
Okay. Page five. B, Frasier Park on the road, well, the last ten minutes from this.
Page 11, yep.
Frasier Park, Frasier.
Freya, F R E Y, that's J, F R E Y A, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And the comedy has two M's, where is that? No big deal.
Okay. What was the word?
Can you read it?
Say again, Bob?
I can't find the pages on, but he's eight in the middle. Accounted for by the big, a comedy is two M's.
Thank you.
And the thick occasion has one S, it should be, not two. O C C A S I O N, where is that? Come on, Adam.
Looking for it.
Looking.
Now, the problem is my fingers have lost their ability to turn pages. I need, I lost all my, there's too smooth.
Yeah, I'm working a third again.
I don't, I don't find it.
Me neither.
Well, I'll find it.
Okay.
I did find this one, it's eight. Under motion.
Found that also.
No big deal.
Okay.
Do you need a motion or is it?
Can I have a motion, please? Adam?
I moved to the minutes of October 4th, 2020. Regular now, 2022.
With the correction? Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Any other discussion? If not, okay, please, I'll call a vote, all in favor, say aye. Bob, Petro?
Uh, yeah, okay.
If you come up with a spelling, another spelling correction, you just let us. Thank you very much, passed unanimously. I will now accept any comments on the October 18th special AP meeting minutes?
Thing I would ask is minutes reflect appointments to a commission, they need to actually have the names of people appointed. Because I think that's the actual record of who's appointed, unless we're attaching or whatever, it should actually be spelled out. I don't remember. In item four of these minutes, who those people were. I mean, I'm sure they're in the agenda. I don't have.
Um, that's our veteran. It was the Veterans Commission and
And to what, to what commission you were.
It was the Veterans Commission, and it's cat, it's a full-time position, full members would be Kathy Walsh.
Just.
Do you want me to go through them?
Yeah, please.
Kathy Walsh, Aldemir. Greg, Gregory Karini. Yeah, I've just drawn two blanks. Um, the two alternates are Ernie Richardson and Jim Clark. Barry Sterns. Is a regular member. And Mr.
Jim Clark, Barry Sterns, Kathy Walsh, Paul Toomey.
Paul Toomey.
So I'll move the adoption of the minutes with the addition of the members that were appointed to the Veterans Commission and alternates as well.
Second. Thank you, Adam. Any other for the comments? Then I will call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Bob, Petro, could you raise your hand if you're gonna aye?
I think I have to say. From the
Okay.
One abstention.
With, so we have four yeses with one abstention. Bob Petro, thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Kara Fishman as our new assessor. She's been hired by the town, I believe we have to appoint her as a, as a body.
Yes, so moved.
And may I have a second, please? Bob, Petro, a second. Any comments, any additions to the appointment? I'll call for a vote then, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And
They lost.
We lost Mike. At this time, I'm going to hold the vote open until he returns, and we'll move on to the properties and facilities. Report, um. If anything, let's see. I can add that the the signage for the cemetery is coming along, they've got the signs in and the post for it. I'd like to add that the, there is a dispute with the cemetery current contractor over work not having been done. At this time, I'll go back into 4A, and we will go back to the vote. I have four yeses, Michael, on the appointment of Kara Fishman. Are you a yes?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, that makes five unanimous, thank you very much. Going back to properties and facilities, and also that the buildings and grounds, we are now back to full capacity with returned employees. Uh. Let's see if there's anything else. Back to full capacity with highway. And the highway department also is back to full capacity at this time. So we're pleased to announce that and, and we'd like to, we will be thanking in, in person, but we'd also like to thank from this board, if I have concurrence. The great job done by those two departments when they were short-staffed, with so much work that was able to get done with a great effort during the growing season and the road repair season. Uh, can we move on then? Is there anything else for properties and facilities? Then I'll go, I'll move on to B, the FY 22 budget report.
And the only one.
Any questions?
Everyone, it's a little tight, it's the elections, which will be throughout the whole this year.
It will be this year and two years from now.
Yeah, no, as far as with us, with this particular budget, this, you know, this, this will also roll into our referendum, no, referendum could be in one. If we can get, if we can get a budget passed in, random would probably be okay, but that's a goal.
Are there any questions that I can, I wanted to get back to you on, are there questions regarding anything to do with the budget report from anybody on the screen, Michael or, or, very good then. Very good. Then we'll move on to C, consider an act on the AP report and budget transfers. The one thing we have it for the, that's all in one month.
Yeah, maybe first.
At this time, I would entertain any questions on the AP report?
Didn't see any. I don't know if anyone else had any.
No, no, pretty straightforward. I'll move the adoption of the report as presented.
May I have a second, please? Michael seconded it. And are there, for other question, further questions about it? My question? You're muted, Mike?
Yes, let me see if I can get back to spinning it around to get to the correct page. Tell the Bolton, what page is it? Voucher detail. Let's go back, I'll find the page by counting them, one, two, three, four. Three, it's, the top thing is upgraded part on the forestry truck, the new forestry truck. It shows it coming out of a line item expense, and that shouldn't be a line item, that should be out of the grant expense, not out of the regular fire commission expense.
So we're talking the $91?
Yep. Yeah, I don't know why it wound up in fire equipment, because it's, it's equipment, but it's equipment on the new truck, it's part of the pump assembly. Was upgraded to an inch and a half ball from a one-inch ball during discussions with the manufacturer, and this is part of the piece that arrived on the truck, it has nothing to do with new equipment. And it shouldn't be under the fire commission, it should be under the expenses for that truck out of the grant.
Okay. So we can, we can, I can modify my motion to send that item back to be placed in, into the proper category.
Page three, the upgraded part on forestry truck, the one five-inch ball valve option should come from the grant.
Right, it should be part of the grant expenses rather than new equipment, because it's a piece on the pump on the truck we just received.
Thank you. Is there anything else that would like, that needs amending on this particular report? During none, Michael, then do you second the
Yes, I do.
With amendment, okay. And at this point, I would say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Bob, Petro?
I have to abstain.
You weren't, okay.
Of this thing in action, getting a shot.
Oh, yes.
Very good. Making an exception. Thank you very much. So there, so is four yeses with Mr. Petro abstaining. Going to the budget transfer, we have a transfer of $200 from office supplies to dues and fees. In this case, we have the situation where we have a new assessor that will be needing dues paid to the appropriate assessors association. The past situation had been the prior assessor had her dues paid by another town. And what I can tell you is that Wellington will be splitting this cost with us, so the final number will be less than, will be one half of this at the final stake. So once we get the hundred dollars back from Wellington. Could I have a motion to accept?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mike, and a second.
Sure.
Bob, more seconds, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five yeses, thank you very much. On the trails committee. So we've had a couple of communications from Mrs. Gwen Marion, Ms. Gwen Marion, who has been working with us as community member and selectman emeritus on trails. And the discussion has been on the Route 6 Hop River access, and there is, they're looking to create a parking space so that towns can be able to park and access lands that the town now owns that was given to the town by the state originally purchased for an expressway that was never built. And the first park that was looked at was next to Bolton Collision, and now there is a new recommendation to go further west up the hill, and for you that may remember, there was Munson's Chocolates, there was a, and two houses to the west, small houses that were taken by the state. Munson's Chocolate bought the property and took down the first house, and the state took down the more westerly house. There is still a curb cut there, and in your packet, there is a if you have this packet, do they all have this?
Yeah.
There, there's a photograph of Brett Marison and Dick Treat. And on a 2019 walk that they look back in there, and so we are now looking at that type of curb cut as a possibility, and we will have the town engineer take a look at it. It would probably hold five cars, it would not be massive, and some trees would need to be taken down. We, Mrs. Marion has offered to write the grant proposal to create this parking space, and because there is money, trails money available. And my recommendation is when trees are taken down, that it be very visible on the eastern side of it, so that people traveling westbound will be able to see easily that there's a parking spot there, and also be able to see in nighttime to keep Mayor Dewells from using it for other purposes. So that's where we are at that point. I don't believe there's any action required at this time.
We need to authorize Ms. Marion to prepare the application.
We're not quite yet, because we have the town engineer look at it first. Good idea. Okay, Adam. You're on. Yes, we do. No, we do not have an amount, but yes, it is budgeted for ongoing engineering work.
I know, I know it's in the budget, I just don't it was nine point check.
Question?
Yeah, Mike, I'm here, Adam, I'll come back to you, Adam. Mike?
Yes, part of that was supposed to be a water source for the fire department. Being able to install a dry hydrant to a water source down lower. If we move this up, we lose that ability completely, I believe.
I'm going to have you talk to Jim Rupert and Joe Dillon, the end town engineer, regarding that. There is still an opening there, there is still a flat space down below that can be used by perhaps the fire equipment, and please, would you please look into that further?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, it doesn't change the, the access that's currently there. The issue, Mike, it really becomes into allowing for, if we use that other location, we have, we would have to allow for parking and also separated access for, for fire apparatus to be able to get in there, utilize a hydrant, turn around and go out again. So I think if you eliminate one, it's a lot easier for us to do the hydrant hookup.
I, I was just, I'm concerned only for the fact that I realize we probably can have the, the lower access small and in, but I was under the impression that part of the reason that we would be allowed access and to make a parking area was because it was for fire department water supply. I'm not 100% sure that we have that same ability if we pick the spot up top where there used to be a driveway to a house.
Driveway, it's an existing curb cut and it's still there.
There are two existing curb cuts.
Yeah, but those curb cuts were for buildings that were taken by the state and may not be available to us to use for a parking area when it was taken by the state, the buildings were torn down by the state, the curb cuts were just never patched over when the state redid the road, and they may not be legitimate curb cuts, is what I'm getting at, and if they're not, and we can't use it, then we have lost the ability because we were using the water source as a backup to take the, to do it, if you know what I'm getting at. So that, that would be my question, it's not that we can't, I just know that we were, we were thinking of the other reason for the ability to do it, so it's something we're gonna have to look into.
I would, I would ask in, with, within the next month before our next meeting, Mike, if you would join me, and we'll go down and we will look at the first one closest to the collision, collision, it is existing, the DOT had been using it as a staging area, there's a that there is a difficult driveway.
I'm, I'm not worried about that one, Pam. I'm worried about the ones up on top of the hill, you may not have permission by default just because there's a curb cut. And if you don't have permission, you may not be able to get permission. We knew we could get permission down below because we were using it for a water source. So you, you may have to go further than just say there's a curb cut there, and we're gonna put a parking lot, so you may have to get state permission to use that again, because it may not be a legitimate curb cut anymore.
I understand what you're saying, and
The ones up top, the two on the north side.
We would have to have the State Traffic Commission approve, approve, and I am absolutely aware of what, of what you speak.
Okay, cool, just trying to make somebody aware, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Adam, would you like to?
Wrestling with how much that's going to cost us to get Joe Dillon to do a preliminary design, and whether we just
Well, before we do that, we, we should verify that we, we have access, a curb cut access to the property before we even move forward on looking to grant and all that. I think certainly within the next few weeks, that we can do.
So we didn't make that inquiry, the town minister?
We can make it from here, that's a simple, that's a that's a relatively easy inquiry.
Redirecting to do.
I, I would, I would direct Jim.
That's what we should be.
So at this time, we have direction from the board to do further investigation before we have any motions. And if that's a concurrence with board members, we will table this item until next meeting.
I wouldn't mind hearing how much
Yeah.
Have Joe Dillon do the design work before we spend that money.
Two questions then? The first question is curb cut by the State Traffic Commission, would it be permissible? And the second, it would be the cost to have the town engineer do a site walk and review of the possible plan.
Well, also, I also check with, I would check with Gwen, too, she was applying for a grant.
She has, she, she will when we're ready.
Right, but I would, but I would, why I even bring it up is sometimes the engineering is included as far as the grant thing, that's why it, you know, I'd give, speak with Gwen and, and also make her aware of what the situation is, and she can probably feel that out before we even go forward, and that'll help making our decisions a little easier.
I will contact Ms. Marion. Very good. Good conversation, thank you all. At this time, we're gonna move on to six, make sure I haven't missed anything, a six, Ongoing Business, we received a letter for the connectivity grant. Money should follow, and the letter was an approval, and it's for dollars up to $186,000, and that is the connectivity grant from the firehouse to the town hall. So we're looking at dollars to be in our pocket soon. No other questions, and we'll move on to the new business. Alexandra Miller-Davy has a presentation in your packet for the high school, Bolton High School Trail Project. We asked if she could possibly be here.
She is here.
Here you are. Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thanks.
So would you please fill in the board, do you have an updated possible plan or thought process, or are you, is, is this still going forward with the first proposal that we have been presented with?
Oh, yeah, I, if you wanted, I could provide some more background, too.
Yes, please, your floor.
Okay. So I'm a sophomore at Connecticut Ivy Academy, and I want to build a trail at the high school. So I, Connecticut Ivy Academy, 10th graders have to make a personal project, and I've chosen to build a trail. And I'd like to build a trail because I'm a mountbiker and I enjoy trail building. I've previously helped people from the New England Mountbike Association and trail building efforts around the state. And I've even helped build a connected trail between Paulkill and Cranables Park and Tolland. And I've also helped in many trail maintenance efforts, many of which were at Case. And I'm also certified by Bicycle Instructor Certification Program, I'm a level one coach. So I have some background in building trails. And I thought the high school would be a great place to build one. It's close for me, and I think it'd be a good addition there. It's close for me and I think it'd be a good addition there. And it would be a multi-use trail. So it would just link up with some of the hiking trails that are already there. The trail would include some small features that would be friendly for beginners, including rollers, berms and rock gardens. And rollers, all they really are is just like mounds of dirt that you can just pump on your bike. They just like give some more speed. And berms are what they sound like. It's a bank of dirt. And it could also include some rock gardens, which are just rocks that you ride over. And if you give me permission, I'd aim to complete the trail by early December.
So we have some questions for you. And do you, do you, do you have a time limit? It must be done by early December to to satisfy your school project needs?
Oh, yes.
So you're talking about within the month of November?
Yep.
So here's, we have some questions that needs to be answered. And one is you are a minor and who would be your supervisor from the school? Or from home or, or from an association that of mountain biking trail creators?
Um, I could have my dad and
So that's one, that's one question we have for you.
Okay.
Think about that, we can come back to that. Uh, the next question we had for you is are you affiliated with a group that would be able to ensure you for the construction of this trail?
Uh, no.
Because that was a question in case someone got hurt because you are coming as an individual, not as a town employee to be working on town property. So that was the second question that was brought up to me. And the third one was, will you be planning on using power equipment?
No.
What would you be using to create the trail for, say to create a berm or the rollers?
I would use a shovel.
And what would you use to clear brush and larger saplings that are in the way?
I would aim to avoid as many trees as possible. I wouldn't plan to cut down any trees actually. And any brush, I would just use a small handheld saw. And to clear leaves and branches, I'd use a rake.
Further questions from board members?
I'm not familiar with that type of pathway and pardon my ignorance, but basically, how wide is, is is this thing? Is it one feet, two feet, three feet?
It'd be very similar to a hiking trail, probably between one or two feet wide.
Okay, like an expanded footpath, is that?
Just a normal footpath.
Okay. And in the area you're doing it, you know, do you have extreme slopes or relatively level? I'm not.
Um, there is a little bit of a slope. It's not a super extreme though.
Okay. My concern, my concern about that is erosion. That's why I I'm sure that that had to be an issue on your side. Has that been considered in your plan?
Uh, yeah. I would make sure that there's appropriate drainage on the trail and armor any like the benching that had been done.
Thank you.
What, I have a couple more questions. Alex, what are, what safeguards are you using to make sure that you are not trans trespassing on private property going on school property?
I have a, I found a map of the property lines and I'd make sure that the trail would stay in that. I think there was a picture I sent of what I had an idea of the trail. I can present that if you'd like.
Okay. That would be great.
Okay.
We have others that have questions and are you ready for that, Alex? Or do you want us to hold, ask some more questions?
You can ask some more questions. I can share that in a little bit if you would like.
Bob, the Pedro?
Alex, is there a plan for maintaining the trail?
But yes, I would come in every few weeks and make sure that it's still good and make any repairs necessary.
Mike Aramita? You're muted?
I have a few questions. Number one, as I look at your map, does this trail extend into the property the town purchased just to the left or the north of the high school? Is that, is it going on to that property that we purchased a couple, three years ago?
I believe so.
Okay.
Alex, are you talking about the property behind the school?
Yes.
Opposite, but so there's the, there's Brandy Street, the high school property on the east side, the far backside of the high school.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
You're not talking going down Brandy Street towards Bolton Center?
Yeah, no, not right behind the high school.
Okay, all right. So you're not even going on to the property that we purchased?
Okay, yeah.
That, so remember Bob, we purchased a few acres back there on the the Bolton Center side of the, the school a few years ago. Okay, number one. Number two, have you walked this whole thing so you know what you have to cut and what you have to do?
Um, not yet. I, so the path that I've planned might change a little bit because of that.
Okay. Next, you talked about putting something to prevent erosion.
Yep.
And the most likely thing would be a type of riprap or stone or something like that. And I, I just see it being a massive undertaking for you to try and bring some of that to the location you want. And which brings me to my next comment. And I don't think if Alexandra is willing to do this work that we should have the town park department assist her in any way she can, they can. Either it bringing some stone in there with wheelbarrows or things like that. And if she does need some power equipment to cut something down, I think they could take an afternoon or whatever and go down and help move a couple of trees or things like that. So I, I think that would eliminate our problem with insurance if we took on some of that type of stuff. And I, I think we should treat this very much like we treat a new road that's built in town. And once it's built, we take it over and it's our problem from then on and she doesn't have to go every two or three weeks to maintain it, that the park department's in charge of it and it becomes a town property, a town resource, a town recreation area, just like other trails do. So I think we could make this a little easier on her, make it a little safer if we provide some of the equipment. And maybe a person or two to help at certain times if she needs it. And then we maintain it so that we're sure that the erosion doesn't take place and all of that.
That would be great.
Questions?
Comment.
Bob?
Yeah.
Laura?
If, if you went that way, it's the timeframe I'm having the most trouble with and because that's, that's an extremely ambitious timeframe for that. And I don't know if it truly allows for any, you know, any issues that may occur that, that just aren't, you weren't ready for. Even if, if, if the town was able to assist you, because then we have to make sure we have personnel available. And why you ask that, and not that I and I'm opposed to this thing, is if you start the project within this early timeframe with all the approvals, is it critical that you're finished by December 1st?
It's not absolutely critical that I'm finished by then. Um, if I can just get the shape of the trail there, that would be fine.
The reason why I even bring this up, if, if, I think, I'd like to bring that plan also. I don't think it's had a chance to be reviewed by our buildings and grounds administrator there, John. And since Mike, Mike brings a good point. You, you are going to graduate and you're going to go on to college and whatever, so you're not going to come home on the weekend and that as much. And I appreciate your thoughts about doing that, but if, if it's built and it becomes a part of what we have, the town in, in some manner will have to be, you know, be part of the maintenance. So if they are, then they should be part of making sure that they can, it, it can work for them as far as a maintenance side of it. So I'd like to just can we get a meeting between you and, and our buildings and grounds, John, and just to go over that plan so he can understand what you have going and maybe present some and rather than going through a third party, you need to either have Pam there or Jim as part of the conversation so that we can give you some better directions. I, I think it's a neat idea and back at a school, it's a piece that just sits there. If it can be utilized, that's fine. But I think it, coordination between you and, and, and the town is paramount, it's important here. And, and I'm sure that if, if within a week you can, we can all meet. At least you can begin, begin the project, have a design and, and explain to whoever your supervisors are that here's the process that we have to utilize so that the town is involved and so forth. And I'm sure you have, they'd be understanding to the point that, you know, our end date may, may go a little further because we're, we're designing and we're, we're doing this not just for now, but for the future and for the town to take over, so.
Mike will come back in one second. Bob, you haven't had a chance to comment. Bob, Pedro, did you want to say something? Mike Aramita?
Yeah, I just thought that the idea of having Jim go in there would allow somebody to maybe put some stakes out so that you can recreate it again. The woods look all the same, but if we put some stakes through there, we could we'd have kind of a definite path and you can make some decisions as you're there and, and those decisions would be available for everybody to see and.
Alex, I'd like to add then, perhaps not stake, but perhaps ribbon like they use.
Just the ties, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, just ribbon. Some, I have some of those little
Dog fence flags?
Yeah.
Those work perfect.
Yeah. Here's my, here's my other ask that you would reach out to the superintendent of schools because you'd be going off of property that is school property. So you'd need to reach out to the Board of Education and Superintendent Hector. Where would your entrance to the beginning of your idea for this great trail, where, where would it, where, where are you coming off of to?
Okay. Let me share my screen and I can show you.
Pam, while she's doing that, one quick comment? Can I make a cut? Yeah. In the town of Bolton, there is no Board of Ed property. The town property is the town property, be it the high school, the center school, the track, anything, it's town property. And I agree to talk to Kristen, but
Thank you for the semantics, I
It's, it's town property and I don't like to get it confused to say it's Board of Ed property because it isn't. It's town.
Okay, I don't think it's gonna let me share. I'll probably explain best I can then.
You have to give her permission.
We have to get, hang on.
And then we make it active speaker so that she has the big screen and just the box.
I want to make you the co-host, Alex, and see if you can open up your screen then.
Oh, it looks like I have to, well, it's a setting on my computer. I'll have to leave and come back. So I'll, I'll just do that. I'll be back in a second.
We're gonna take a two-minute recess at this time?
Wow, I can share now.
Okay.
Quick, we're ready for recess. We're impressed, Alex.
Okay. So here's what I would plan to have the trail, the path of it look like.
So show us where the high school is with your cursor.
So here's the high school.
And where are the ball fields?
Um, the ball fields would be here. I believe.
Going all the way to the north also?
Yep.
The upper part of the page. Across that property, yep, right behind that area and going to the right.
Okay.
There are ball fields in there.
That's the original.
Yep.
So we need to carefully map out where a biker would come, park and be allowed to ride their bike. So say others find this very attractive and they come with a bike on the back of a car and they're not familiar with the area. We wouldn't want them riding right across the soccer field or the baseball field.
Yeah.
Get down, it looks like it's in the middle
Yeah.
Of the school property that belongs to the town. Um, and so we, I think we have to do a bit more planning here, Alex.
I would go on. I think you have to go around those fields.
And it might require either area to the
Yeah.
But we own land, we own, we own land in the south as well. Behind the tennis courts.
Behind the tennis courts or next to the tennis courts?
On the south side of the tennis courts, parallel, perpendicular to the, to Brandy Street?
That's, we own a very small piece of property there.
That might
Like, like a right of way or something along the side of the tennis courts.
Be a possibility for, anyway, so this, I think we need a little more planning to have a good access for it, Alex?
Yeah, there is a sidewalk that goes around the school and then there's a gravel path that goes back there, I believe.
There is a pathway you're posted?
Between the
Yeah, if I remember correctly, there's a a gravel path that's, that goes along here.
I don't think it was ever designed for bikes or
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Issue, but you may, you, you also have the parking, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt anyone, but you have the park, the parking lot to the north. And, and then as you go easterly, is part of that old roadway that went all the way down and back, it'd probably be to go off of that because if someone's going to come there, park their car, take their bikes off, the best point to start from is right at the rear portion of, of that parking area. And then you'll never interfere with any ballpark, any, or any games going on or any events that in that regard to the school, I think that's paramount to make this work. I think going through the middle, if, if I were the superintendent, I'd say, I ain't gonna happen while we're in schools in session. Certainly not while we have games going or any things like that. If, if it's going to be a, you know, this is obviously planned for public use. You know, and access has to be from a point, it doesn't interfere with, with any school function. So that would have to be along the northerly side and cut across somewhere.
It, it would also have to take into consideration school security. And using the parking lot might be the best way to do that, but anything that's back there may bring into question. And using the parking lot might be the best way to do that, but anything that's back there may bring into question school security.
That's why I say you 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 have.
And the, if I might, Bob?
I'm done, I'm sorry.
Uh, one last question on the trail, we should just talk about the entrance. Alex, looking at your trail end, the very tip at the end, are you planning to turn around down at that end, a loop so that?
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you, cuz it's, Adam?
I have lines on this map and I know that somewhere back there, there's a cross-country trail.
Mm-hmm.
So which is that and is this? Is the dotted line that the trail ends at, is that part of the cross-country trail or part of a?
I'm not sure.
The one downward starts is that it is either of those dotted lines, a cross-country trail.
Can you hear him, Alex?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm just whether there's a conflict between this trail and that kind, that cross-country trail. And I also, I do kind of wonder what's back there in terms of wetland.
Yeah.
That I don't know and hasn't been flagged. Um, so on this map may not.
Question too about where it ends on Bailey Road.
May I?
I wouldn't expect there to be much cuz this is a slope here, but.
Alex, do you know where Bailey Road is?
Um.
Over on the back side, do you, are you planning to be anywhere near the end of Bailey Road?
No.
Starts in Endover and actually ends in Bolton and comes up behind this property?
I was not planning to, I'm not sure where that is uh on this map, so.
Okay, so let's let's do a little, Adam, are you finished?
Um, I I do think that the um superintendent needs to be asked about this cuz. Well, it, no, yes, townland, I agree. But I also think that there are school activities back there, including, well, mostly the cross-country. But also where the trail comes out with or proposed to come out. That's where soccer and the baseball fields are and so.
And and I'm I'm concerned about security too, and she has to be involved in that.
And that if it's a bike trail, how do people distinguish between that and something that they might use a motorized bike? And that create all kinds of issues there because we already have that problem at Frey. At Parks and in the area where the um former drive-in is.
Alex, um, he's referring, he's referring, you know where, do you know where um. Freya Park is, do you know where, the notch and you know? The area off um the commuter parking lot area. And there has been some trail riding usage over there that has not been approved. And with random or planned tree markings with spray paint that has not been approved.
Uh, yeah, I saw that.
And um there is a proposal for to put a gate across there. Uh, so um there's some uh uh concerns about that piece of property. Um, and I, so I think we have um, you've brought up a great, great idea and I'm, I I laud it. I think it's it's very creative and I think it's a great active use of property that has had no other usage or plan. I go, I would have to concur with Mr. Mora that this is very ambitious and I'm not sure how we could get it done by December. But if you would like to continue working on this, hearing the board's interest, but also the concerns about. These items that we brought up tonight, um, I would like to propose that you come back to our December meeting. With perhaps some answers and some um uh from your research and outreach to, say, the superintendent of schools. And to the Board of Selectmen office to be able to reach it, to do outreach to the town park, town um, the Parks Department.
I actually have talked to Ms. Hacks about it.
And and we have to, okay, would you like to report in on that right now?
Uh, yeah, um, she said, uh, let's see. Uh, she sent me to talk to uh uh Mr. Peter Movic. Uh, and he sent me to talk with you.
So we're playing point to the next guy down line, okay.
We're going on.
Definitely.
You having fun, Alex? Um, we are, we're we're absolutely enjoying having you here with us. Let me, I just want to say that. Um, we also have a trails ad hoc committee that is made up of town employees and. Uh, a a member of the community as an emeritus member of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, and I would recommend that you call the Selectmen's Office and ask the Trail Committee to meet. And to consider your request with some more of these, with some, once you have a few more of these answers. Uh, who your mentor's gonna be and um what you do about insurance. Uh, where, how the trail end is gonna look with a loop. Um, where you, how you plan perhaps to mark where the trail is. Um, and then um we need to consider, I think, the usage of a bike trail. We don't have anything like that in any of our regulations, so does that help you at all? Um, or does that scare you off? I don't.
How does it help? Yeah.
Scare you off what at all? I'm just trying to help you with a perhaps a bit of a plan.
Yeah, that it helps.
Any other board members want to have a conversation?
No, and and I think going with the bike, that would give, it also give us a chance to look at the uh inland wetlands map. So we can pull that out and this way we can do an overlay and have a a pretty decent idea of of where wetlands are in relation to what's being planned. And I know I've appraised several parcels around there and and it's. The the, it's readily available, just we we can go online, get it USDA maps, we'll have it and we'll plus what we have here. We have, but that that'll be an integral part of what we have to. Yeah, this way if we do it, we we can avoid wetlands.
Which is a paramount in this particular plan, we have to avoid wetlands. It is by law and regulation. Uh, Alex, is there anything else we can answer or add to your confusion tonight? I wish I I wish we could be a little more concrete this evening, um, because I can see so much thought has gone into this on your your part. Um, oh, and you were going to look at um going back there and perhaps placing ribbons around trees, perhaps on one side. Trail to be on the on the uh right next to that, the ribbons. Okay, very good. So you have a bit of an idea what where where to go from here?
Yeah.
Okay, any other thing, anything else from any other board member?
Nope.
Very good. Alex, thank you very, very much for coming before.
Thank you.
Feel free to reach out. Very good.
They could not host anymore.
But this time we're gonna move down to seven B under new business, is there and? I'm sorry. Her face. I don't think I can. So back back to the new business B, consider an act and a resolution for leftover fund from the school. So this is to be able to use up to one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars uh in leftover funds. And by requirement of the State Department of Education, we have four motions that need to be made. Well, Brady. There's one. Here's one. That's all I got. We'll we'll read them out loud, everybody. So the first motion would be to move that the Board of Selectmen approve the expenditures for the remaining funds from the two thousand and seventeen borrowing allocation. For the Board of Education projects at the Bolton Center School according to section A four. Of the approved resolution of the town meeting on January seven twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen. For the purposes of the replacement of the fireproof stage curtain, cafeteria, kitchen stove. Energy management system and lockers, comma, to the extent of available funds. To make that all work, we have to have three motions in our records to satisfy the state. Uh, this, this, that would be the first motion. The second motion would be to move that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the Board, Bolton Board of Education through the superintendent. To apply to the Commissioner of the Department of Administrative Services, the money men. For an indoor air quality construction grant at Bolton Center School. And this third one would be to move that the Bolton, that the building committee is hereby established. For the HVAC indoor air quality project at the Bolton Center School. The members for the building committee for this project are Scott Rich, Andrew Brunel and Ben Davis. And the fourth motion would be to move that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of. The schematic drawings and the outline for the HVAC indoor air quality project at Bolton Center School.
These are two different issues though. The the leftover money is a different issue from the HVAC issue.
Yes.
Nothing to do with each other, so maybe we should take up one at a time.
One at a time, oh yeah.
I mean, I I the 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 remaining funds issue is a no-brainer, we should just move to do it.
Just move that one.
I'm gonna make the motion that the Board of Selectmen approve. You can expenditures for the remaining funds from the two thousand and seventeen borrowing allocation for the Board of Education project at Bolton Center School. According to section A four of the approved resolution of town meeting on Jan- January twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen. For the purposes of the replacement of the fireproof stage curtain, cafeteria, kitchen stove, energy management system and lockers. The incentive available funds.
And you seconded that. Bob DePietro seconded it. Um, Adam, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Energy management system does not refer to the HVAC.
Yeah. I'm I'm quite certain it doesn't.
This is, oh, very good, well, we will, we will make a motion for all four of these at some point. And that it will satisfy it, right? So I have a on the table, uh moved and seconded a motion. Do I have any further comments on the first motion?
Nope.
All in favor then, say aye.
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 unanimously, we'll take a second motion?
Not sure, but I think the other three issues have to do with trying to take advantage of the money that's now available.
Exactly.
Indoor air quality, which has that a a deadline of December thirty-one right now, but. Maybe we'll extend it.
Move these.
I wish we had more clarification for you, I apologize.
Listen, I mean, Bob, Bob, you were at the meeting.
Right.
It was just.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is what the um, you know, at the city board meeting, it was one of the the primary issues and this is what. This is the beginning of it, to let to allow it to go forward. And um I I, you know, and like you say, these are the funds that the federal funds pass to the state that. They're looking to get to, to, these are, that's part of the old COVID uh enhancement to their quality and.
Please make a motion?
So I'm gonna move the motion. Move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Bolton Board of Education through the superintendent to apply. The Commission of the Department of Administrative Services for an indoor air quality school construction grant at Bolton Center School. That's moving.
I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second it, a a further comment? Any further motion, uh then I'll ask for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bob DePietro says yes also, so it passes unanimously, I'll entertain the next motion.
Move that the Bolton, that the building committee is hereby established for the HVAC indoor air quality project at Bolton Center School. The members of the building committee for this project are Scott Rich, Andrew Brunel and Ben Davis.
And I'd ask for a second.
Second.
Mike Armita, any further comment on that motion? Then I would call, ask, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Passes unanimously, thank you, and the last motion.
Motion, move that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorize at least the preparation of the schematic drawings and outline specification. For the HVAC indoor air quality project at Bolton Center School.
Mr. Taylor seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Can I ask a question first?
I will hold the vote open.
Do we have money to pay for that? And where is it coming from, real quick? Coming out of engineering or or do we, did we give them money to do that is what I'm getting at?
We have, I'm trying to think where, yeah, there are funds for that and I can't tell you where they are.
As long as they have funds to expend on what we're telling them to do is good.
Welcome to the. It's in capital, but I don't have any problem.
I wanted to ask a stupid question, Pam. Where does Bob get these, get the materials for these boxes?
We were.
I don't see it in my packet.
I don't either, Bob.
So.
Where do, where, where does this come from?
So we have to back up, so this was supposed to be an addition tonight and we were supposed to add it in to.
Oh.
So we.
Thank you.
So we're reading it instead, that's fine.
And you having a written copy, that's why I tried to read it as carefully and distinctly as I could.
Okay.
And I will apologize also, I thought, because I had a copy of it, that it was in the package. My apologies.
No problem.
The first one was three were extra that came in yesterday.
And they, the three that. Are, do we vote on the last one?
No, and Pam, I just wanna, when I ask the question about money, I want to be sure that them applying for a grant for these projects is not held up. Because we don't give them money to identify the project scope, if you know what I'm getting at. So we, uh, can we modify the motion to add that the money will be uh removed from somewhere or guaranteed the funds available or somehow? So that we know that they've got money to do this um.
I think these these resolutions are prepared specifically for.
The State Department of Education.
The State Department of Education, that's why.
For their request.
All right, I just, I want to be sure that they have the money to do the plan that they're supposed to do in this last motion.
Take it out or operate it, but I mean.
Okay, I.
That's not a, that's not a, yeah.
As long as they, long as they have the money and we're not held up applying for a grant because they don't have the money to do the study or whatever they have to do for this, I'm happy.
Okay, very good, then I would ask for a motion on the for the fourth.
We already have it in second.
I'm sorry, I would call for the vote then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, and I'd call Bob DePietro, so it passes unanimously, thank you, Bob. Um, my apologies again for the confusion. Uh, I would just like to add, we'll save that for later. We're gonna go down to the, then that's been taken care of, right? We're gonna, that one, we're gonna.
Yeah, cuz that's gonna be our special.
Yep. So the first selectment report at this time with COVID-19 is staying stable. There's no changes on the town. And the trail B is trail safety moving update. Perhaps you knew about an accident that occurred between a walker and a bicyclist on the piece of trail that is next to exit five. It is a paved trail that the DOT paved, and it was right near the Manchester border. And there was great confusion as to who was to respond. And when the victim wanted a police report, there was great confusion as to whose jurisdiction that part of the trail would be covered by. So we have two sections of trails in the, in the town. There's unpaved and there is paved. There is paved that was done by the DOT. There's unpaved that belongs to the DEEP. So I requested a meeting to bring together the officials that provide safety. And at that meeting, the DEEP came with a conservation officer and two other administrators from the Marlboro office also came. Also attending were two people from the state police. One was Sergeant Cormier, and the other was our resident state trooper, Brian Contenta. And also attending was Jim Rupert, myself, and our fire chief. So we were able to put all the appropriate players at the table and look at maps to review who's, where, whose, whose jurisdiction do these different types of trails fall under? And what we discussed was the unpaved trails, the rails to trails that come from Andover into Bolton crosses underneath the highway and heads towards Vernon were DEEP trails and would be covered by conservation officers unless they could not meet a safety need. And then the state police would cover it. And on the case of the DOT constructed trail that is paved that goes from our New Red Bridge area and heads westbound to the Manchester line would be covered by our resident state troopers in the case of safety for a criminal situation. And I'm referring to criminal situations or if a police report was needed. And the just, the discussion was also brought up as access to the different trails and how they would access them. And the fire department was in concurrence with the discussion of these two agencies on how they would cover two sections of trails. So it's a very long winded way of saying we had everybody looking eye to eye and coming up with a consensus as to where the coverage would be.
Who actually responded to the specific?
Well, first, the, you really, 9/11 was called and Manchester answered. And Manchester said, Manchester dispatch said, you're just over the line. You're in Bolton. And that's when things started getting into a jumble. And so then the state police were called, and they said they thought it was DEEP. DEEP was called. DEEP said, no. Now, the good news is emergency crews immediately responded. So that was taken care of. And the victim had multiple breaks of, on both legs. And so we were very pleased to be able to.
EMS responded immediately.
Immediately.
Fire and EMS.
Well done. And so, hang on, Mike, please. And so that, that part was not the questionable part. The questionable part was for the victim, she wanted a police report to be able to have that for insurance purposes, for health coverage, and have the other person pay for her healthcare. And perhaps other litigation. I don't know what was going to transpire, but she needed a police report. So DEP then said it was state police, state police said it was DEP. So we have now had a clarification as to who has what jurisdiction. So up to the Manchester Bolton line from Manchester side, that is the Manchester PD to the town line, then it becomes Bolton resident state troopers or resident state troopers from Troop K will cover then to where the pavement ends. And then at that point where it becomes gravel, it becomes DEP, DEEP conservation officers unless they, because there are only two for all of Eastern Connecticut.
Gonna say, how quickly is DEP gonna respond?
That the resident state troopers are their backup. So.
The probability of well, the cops should not be in there and RSP be in there.
RSP will call the COs and everybody will be on the same page. So this took a, a morning to sort out, and we're very, very honored to have such great cooperation amongst our safety people. It was, I would like to say, a pleasure to work with all of them, and their cooperation was, was very well done. Mike?
No, I have no comment other than the fact that the job got taken care of and the paperwork is what was the problem later.
Um, and the, in this case, the victim was a former Bolton resident that now lives in Manchester who walks the trail every day. So that was a very interesting little touch to it. So that's what I've got for you there. And the, under the administrator's report, monthly report, I have an annotated set of comments. We will be looking at the recycling and bulk waste bids. They, we are very close to having a contract. There are two bids that are very close together, so we're getting close to it. We'll have that for you on the 14th. The skid unit for the brush truck is installed and the truck should be in service tested. Um, I wish I could read my own handwriting. Uh, training needed.
Pam, it's, it's complete. It's stocked, and the guys are training with it now, and it's, it's called for. It'll probably roll.
So the New England what NEP, what does that mean, Michael? Training is needed for reimbursement documents.
Right, that's the last thing. The, uh, what is it? EVOC training, emergency vehicle operator, whatever it is. Training is needed for the people who will be driving the truck prior to us requesting our reimbursement. That's the last piece that has to be done. And that, we're scheduling that right now. So hopefully shortly after the first of the year, we can apply for our funds to be reimbursed.
Thank you. The pickleball court is been polished up and striped. The final details are being completed. The last piece is to install a bench to meet the grant conditions. Carrie has asked that we consider installing fencing around it at some point. Just for your, for your edification, those of you like Adam Teller that wants to learn how to play pickleball. It is on Thursday nights at 6:00 PM at the high school. And Wednesdays, if you're a good pickle player like Bob Moore.
Oh, yeah.
You can go play at the high school at 6:00 PM on Wednesday. So seven, Adam, at 6:00 PM, guy. So everybody's very excited about getting this pickleball court up and running. There is a one inch difference between the pickleball net height and the, and Hennessy height. Uh, there's nothing extraordinary on the CCM and the CROG board meetings. There's a draft budget for Eastern Highland. Jim is working on with the buying consortium. That's the HGAC for the modular office structure. The problem has been they have not been calling back. He has called and called and called. The modular office structure people have their structures have become a hot commodity since the devastation in Florida, and they're chasing the vendors and looking at pricing and pricing up the actual structures and alternatives. So we, that is in flux at the moment, but Jim is working on it significantly. And we received the commitment letters. You heard earlier, the connectivity grant. Work, the completed low SIP edits have been submitted for the $1.5 million. For the staff project consideration on the capital budget, as you all know what that is. Oh, so the BOE had a very old, old, old truck that was in very rough shape. And the town had a buildings and grounds vehicle that was in better shape. And so the decision was made because we share the buildings and grounds work with the BOE that instead of selling the town vehicle, which is used as a runabout, they will give it to the BOE and sell the one that's in worse shape. I hope that was just as clear as it could be.
Yeah, makes perfect sense.
Yep.
The better ones staying, the worst ones going.
Yep.
Uh, reviewed the school IOP and signed off on it. Reviewed two grants for the submission of the Harvard Foundation for Public Giving. $1,842 to, for the Conservation Commission to be able to buy composting bins that they will then sell, and the money will come back. And $4,500 to restore the well pump and pressure tank and yard hydrant for Heritage Farm. So if we get those grants, we'll let you know.
Pam, excuse me. I think there was one more applied for. Bruce told me that he was applying for one for the training prop and equipment. I don't know what the price was, but I think he ran that with Jim the other day. So there might be a third application there.
Thank you for that update. Met with Friar and Associates regarding the townwide facility study and possible renovations to the notch road.
Ma'am, first.
Mister.
Friar and Associates. Years ago, before I was on the board, I remember them doing this evaluation of our facilities. But I keep hearing this report that you met with Friar and Associates regarding a townwide facility for possible renovations to North Road Diddy Rooms. Can you please explain what is referred to there?
Yes, I can, to the best of my ability.
Okay.
The Board of Selectmen made it very, very clear that they did not like the use of a church hall for voting. The thought, the creative thought was to see if it was possible to create one large space out of those two empty former classrooms behind the senior center. Make them one space and have a put a removable partition that could be drawn across to have two spaces when needed and make it a one large open space instead of having it chopped up with a classroom hallway classroom. If we could make it one large space that so could possibly hold a, be a space for voting in the future. And so that was the, the thought by Mr. Rupert to have Friar and Associates look at this as part of the townwide facility study to be able to, so that's the reason for that part.
If I may just add.
Mr. Moore?
What we're looking, what they're looking at is, is the support structure in that portion of the building, whether or not, or so that it, you know, what, what it entails to actually remove those, those walls in between there, whether it's their support walls or not. Friar had done pretty extensive study years ago on those buildings. So they're hoping that we have enough data with them to be able to go back to look at it and give us some, a pretty good indication if we can do that. If you can, you can then create that one, you know. If we can plan for it, we can then budget for it. And create this.
What was the outcome?
Well, we just started that process.
This is just reporting that this is beginning.
Well, that's not what it says. It says you met with Friar and Associates.
I believe to begin the dialogue as to what we're looking for as a, could it, could it be done?
Haven't heard back yet from Friar as to what, what that, what the structure is there, if it can be done, if it can, how it can be done.
Adam, are you still with us?
Yes.
Is there a question about the use of space for even temporary for the registrar?
Yes, and I, I, because Jim isn't here, so to respond to it, but I do have a question about that.
Put that on at the, as we, at the bottom, we'll come back to that, that work.
I'm willing to do that although I'm into the voting.
All right, we'll go right, we'll stay with it then. Please proceed, Adam.
My question is, my understanding is that the registrar is asked quite a while ago for space, both for their own offices, but also because their offices are not in an accessible place and are in a building that at our last meeting, we declared not really, not really usable. That is the North Road Municipal Space. And that they also asked for space to be used for this upcoming fall election for same day registration. And that although that had, that space had been talked about being these two classrooms that we've talked about as being changed and used for office space, that they were denied that. And I, I, this is the first I've heard about it only from the registrars in the last week or so. I don't think that was brought to us as a board. And I also don't think that the issue of the priority of, number one, it has to do with voting. Number two, it has to do with whether the space that they're in is accessible to the, to the disabled. And I think those are extremely high priorities that should have been brought to this board if those, if there was a no to the registrars. Before, before a no was given to the registrar before, I would like to know what was more pri, what, what had a higher priority than that, voting and registration of voters? There isn't anything in my mind that has, or there isn't very much that has a higher priority. So what are those spaces being used for right now? They couldn't be used for this election with adequate notice for that purpose.
Mike, I need to ask a question.
Well, I don't want you to answer it because I want the town administrator or whoever made the decision to answer. And it couldn't have been you because you're the deputy first selectman and a member of this board, and you don't have the authority to make that, and that.
I'm not answering that question. I'm not answering that part of the question.
Okay, so.
You, you had, you had two or three questions. I've just asked the, the part about allowing voting in that building. It had to do with, with, with not the entryway, but we did not.
Not voting, the registrar's, registration.
I'm sorry.
I'm not talking about voting. I understand that voting is longer.
I misunderstood, I misunderstood.
My understanding is that the registrars asked for two things. They asked to move their offices to an accessible location, and they asked to use that location as same day, as same day registration space. And those are.
For voting.
That different thing.
Registration.
So if the registrars asked, the registrars are statutory officers, have a statutory job and duties. And if they asked, I want to know what the response was and, and who authorized the response. That's all I want to know.
I was, I was responding to what, what I thought was a different question for, sorry.
But what we need to know, and I, I kind of agree with Adam, is we need to know the reasons for a response, who made it and what it was. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request. Unfortunately, the person who could answer that for us is not with us tonight. So I think we're, we're gonna have to bring it up at a later point, and I think that should be put. So I think we're, we're going to have to bring it up at a later point and I think that should be put. Put on some agenda somewhere so we can discuss it or hold a special meeting to discuss it. That's fine with me too.
Oh, on the next regular agenda, since it's too late to have an answer for this election.
Right, well, that's why I said maybe we could do it at a special meeting prior to that. I wouldn't have a problem meeting with whoever to talk about that prior.
Our town administrator will not be back in time before the election to have that conversation.
Okay, all right, well, then when we'll get the answer when we get it.
It's too late.
Yep, okay.
Thank you for, thank you for your concerns and it is appreciated. And I, my knowledge of this occurred only about a week ago. And it was after the discussion had been had through, I believe, emails with the registrars and both registrars. And I was told that they would handle it the way they have handled it in the past with having someone on the ground level. That could help someone who is handicapped. Without moving the entire office, which is how they have handled it in the past with an eye on making it. Handicapped accessible at a future election. And that's all the information I can share with you at this time. I don't have any more than that and we'll bring it up at the next meeting. We'll make, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Adam. Going on to scheduling diversity training, possibly in January, we're waiting to hear back from. The company that would provide that, we are asking for two dates to make it more accessible for our town employees. So that half could come to one and half could come to the other within one department. Making it. Having a better, greater return for those people to come. It is similar to diversity training that they've had in the past. Completed job description for the maintainer two and the lead maintainer contract. This discussion item during negotiation and has not been completed previously. After working with the department head, the draft was completed and sent to the union for review and we're waiting for them to respond back. But it's very close. And the training with Tyler Software. Kathy McCavanagh has received some training on our, and thank you very much, on our financial software. Where so she can create a training manual for supervisors and spend time with them to train them individually. To make the process more seamless. And he has worked on the insurance for the election use of the cur pole and that is done. So. We go to the next page. Creating calendars for. Boards and commissions meeting dates on the website for the next year. They're setting dates for regular meetings, which is required. Web E O C training for the selectmen's office for Kathy and that's Kathy and Sue Ellen. Is an online portal we use to communicate with the Department of Emergency Services and Homeland Security during significant events. It is used for regular communications, local updates on conditions, requests for state assistance and commodities requests. The system was used to request P P E and test kits as an example through the COVID pandemic. Updating the sexual harassment training list so that we can audit for compliance. We believe that we are compliant with employees, but likely have board and some board and commission members that are. Have not done it yet due to changes in membership, so we're working on that. Letter went to supervisors getting for their input on the cap of budget. Schedule staff meeting with capa meeting is already been done. For the staff, trail safety meeting, which we discussed already. And for board members also, there has been a holiday party scheduled for December 7th at Georgina's time to be announced. And the final revisions to unit contract, waiting union feedback. Non supervisors and highways, highway, Mike, air me down.
Yes, dealing with the contract and the maintainer portions there. I've been pushing this for at least four or five years now, and that is the, the. Adoption of our shared services plan, which. Was when we originally talked about it, going to be a public works department, which encompassed the board of. The road department, street department, parks department and maintainers for the schools. And I have to admit, I've, I've, I've harped on this when it came to the, the skid steer not too long ago. And at least once or twice or four or five times a year I harp on it. And I'm going to be very, very, very disappointed if the contracts that have been negotiated. Make that a problem when our current street department supervisor retires. And I'm hoping against all hope that. Somewhere along the line, people listened and put things in these contracts, which will allow us to form. A public works department with one person in charge so that equipment and personnel can be coordinated. In the best fiscal sense for the town. And up until now, it hasn't happened. The, the three operate somewhat independently. Jim has brought two of them somewhat together. Jim Brod Batromovich, but we still are not making that leap to the one department that can service the town the best. Where if a board of ed individual needs a dump truck, he can go over to the town garage and get the dump truck and take it over to the school. And pick up a load of loam and drop it where he needs it and get the tractor and spread it or get the skid steer and spread it. Without the crap of union people saying that's our truck. You have to have our union guy in it because we have three separate unions and, and I know how that works. Because if the town garage in East Hartford came and took one of my fire trucks, my guys would have filed grievances left and right saying it's their truck, their job, their stuff. And if we have a problem with people coming to the town garage and taking a dump truck or a tractor or a skid steer. Or a pickup truck or a computer or whatever needs to be moved for the betterment of the town. And we get union grievances over the fact that that's. That work of the street department, not the work of the park department, and that's the equipment of the street department, not the school board. And if all of this falls apart in this whole plan that we've been working on for so long. Looking forward to people retiring so we can make the final jump. If this doesn't happen, I'm going to be a very unhappy camper.
Oh, Mike.
I, I.
At this time, I would, I would entertain. Someone from. The contract negotiations point of view.
Maintainer one, maintainer two are the, these are lower. None, none of these are supervisory personnel, so.
But you know what I'm getting at, Bob? You've, you've felt the same way as I have that we have to have this done. So that we can be more efficient with our staff and our equipment. It makes no sense to have two ball field line machines or two ball field aerators when we have. A very limited amount of ball fields and the, the equipment's got to go back and forth. We can't operate the way we have been. In a, in a, a responsible financial way. We can't do it. We've got too little and too much. And we, we can't have. An extra dump truck for the parks and an extra dump truck for the schools and an extra dump truck for the town road crew when they can share these things. And I, I see what's coming down the road and I see grievances and all kinds of crap. And I'm going to be very upset if that's what these contracts have led to. Because that just pushes the road, the ball down the road a few more years with new supervisors and, and garbage. And, and I've said it, I don't know how many times since I've sat on the board that this has got to happen. If we want to cut costs and be more efficient, because we're not. We're just not. I see several little dump trucks running around where we probably only need one. But they won't share them and I, I'm going to stop now and, and. Just shut my mouth and, and wait to see what happens, but as I said, I'm going to be a very unhappy camper. If these contracts don't push us in that direction. And.
None of the, none of the contract. The employee contracts under there give them any authority as to who uses what equipment as far as what department, what not. And so you can, you can take these, bring them forward. Change the structure as to who the, we haven't done that. If you, if you create a, a building department, then that's a supervisory department change. It is not an employee change. The, what, what these guys do. It, this, the description is what the current guys do.
Did we even, did we even make an attempt to change the name of the highway department to the public works department? A simple little thing like that, in each contract, the name should be changed to public works. Not highway, not parks, not board of ed. It should be public works departments in the contracts. Identifying them as not three separate entities, but one. And there should be an end date, there should have been a discussion with the union negotiators, meaning the business agents that come from their low. Their internationals or the state agencies or whatever that represent their locals. There should have been some discussion of the endpoint that we're looking at. Because if we have identified more contracts that don't, don't broach this subject. We're not doing what we said we're going to do and we can't do what we said we're going to do because we have three separate locals. It should have been a fairly easy op, operation to, since both the street department and the parks department. Are members of the same overall union, just two separate locals. It should have been a fairly easy operation to combine those two locals into one with beginning at one, two separate pay grades. And over three years or two years leveling the pay grades out, so everybody in those two. Would have been the same pay grades for the same jobs and been the public works department for the town. If we didn't do that, we blew it. We missed the boat 100%. And that's a failure of those contracts. And I personally request that those contracts be dumped and we go back to the drawing board and start over. If we didn't do those, we blew it. We missed it completely.
In those contracts that, that.
If there's nothing in those contracts that, that identify the things I just said, the contracts are shit.
Would you please watch your language?
I will. It was shit.
I'm sorry, Michael, that you were not part of the negotiations and not part of the personal.
I gave input all along. All along I said this. I've been saying this for years. There's nobody sitting in this group that doesn't know my feelings on this. And our feelings when we started this shared services stuff years ago. The endpoint was always identified as a public works department. We even talked about things like maybe hiring a town engineer who would run the whole thing and be a dual service person, an engineer. And the person that runs public works like Mansfield had with Don Aubrey. In fact, I remember bringing Don Aubrey's name up because he was the public works department head and he ran the, he was the town engineer at the same time. We have opportunities here to become a very efficient operation. And if we don't do it now, we screwed up, we blew it. It's, it's off for another two to four or however many years these contracts run for. And I am, I am telling you, I've said it and I've said it and I've said it. And if you didn't listen, well, then I got a right to be P O'd.
I would invite you, Michael, to come in, please, to review the contract as is being presented to the, that particular group, those two groups at this time. At this time, thank you for the conversation. I, we've heard what you've had to say.
Motion to adjourn.
We.
Motion to adjourn under Robert's Rules of Order takes precedence over all other motions. You either second it and vote on it or. If nobody seconds it, then you can move on.
I'm going to ask that there not be a second for just one minute, please. At this time, we have. We have come up with two other dates that I would like to announce so that they go on the table. We have November 14th at 4:00 P M. There will be a special meeting regarding two items and that will reflect. The trash contract and the executive session to look at the town administrator's contract. And you have the date of December 7th. At this time, I will entertain Michael's motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Bob, Di Pietro seconds. All in favor, say hi.
Hi, good night.
Night, passage unanimously. Thank you all.